Twenty-third, twenty twenty-three Town of Barnstable Planning Board Meeting. My name is Steve Robichaud. The Planning Board's public hearing this evening will be held at seven P. M. by remote participation methods. Alternative access to this meeting shall be provided in the following manner. The meeting will be televised via Channel eighteen. It may be viewed via the Channel eighteen website at streaming eighty-five dot TownofBarnstable.us slash cablecastpublicsite. Real-time access to the Planning Board meeting is available utilizing the Zoom link or telephone number and meeting ID provided below. Public comment can be addressed to the Planning Board by utilizing this link and telephone number. And the link is TownofBarnstable-us-zoom.us/j/ eight-five-seven-three-six-eight-two-nine-nine-one-zero. The phone number, eight-eight-eight-four-seven-five-four-four-nine-nine. And tonight's meeting ID, eight-five-seven-three-six-eight-two-nine-nine-one-zero. Applicants, their representatives, and individuals required or entitled to appear before the Planning Board may appear remotely and may participate through the link or telephone number provided. Documentary exhibits and/or visual presentation should be submitted in advance of the meeting so that they may be displayed for remote public access viewing. Application materials may be accessed by contacting Karen Herron at Karen.Herron@Town.Barnstable.us or calling five-zero-eight-eight-six-two-four-zero-six-four. And I'd like to introduce our board members and staff, starting with Ray.
Good evening, Ray Sexton.
Thank you, Ray, and Tim.
Good evening, Tim O'Neill.
Thank you, Tim, and Steve.
Good evening, everyone. Steven Costello.
Thank you, Steve. And Paul, Michael, and Mary are unable to attend this evening. And Kate, if you could introduce yourself.
Good evening, Kate Moltenado, Assistant Director of Planning and Development.
Thank you, and Karen.
Evening, Admin Assistant, Planning and Development.
Thank you, Karen, and Jim.
Good evening, Jim Cooper, Senior Planner, Planning and Development.
Thank you, Jim. Again, my name is Steve Robichaud. Notice of recording, this meeting is being recorded and broadcast on Channel eighteen in accordance with Mass. General Law Chapter Thirty A, Section Twenty. And I will now inquire whether anyone else is taking this meeting? And if so, if you could please make your presence known. Seeing none, we will now go to the public comment phase. This is public comment that is not related to any of our agenda items this evening. This is just general planning board public comment. David, do you know if we have anybody for general public comment? And Karen? Anybody with any general public comment may speak at this time. And seeing none, we will continue to our first item this evening. Sorry, Mr. Starr, yes.
I see. Oh, I thought Marie LeBlanc had her hand raised.
Oh.
No, okay. Thank you. Sorry.
Okay, no worries. Thank you. And on to our first item this evening. And Ray, if you could take this one, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is an approval not required. Bay Ridge Realty LLC, Mr. Dennis Kirkato, have submitted an approval not required plan entitled "Approval Not Required Subdivision of Land Dated December sixteenth, two thousand twenty-two, for nine hundred Old Stage Road and zero Patriot Way, Centerville, Massachusetts." This is not a public hearing and does not need to be voted on to open or close.
Excellent. Thank you very much, Ray. And if we have the applicant here, Mr. Eddie.
Yeah.
Good evening. And please take it away.
Good evening, everyone. For the record, Matthew Eddie, Professional Engineer with Baxter &amp; I Engineering and Surveying. I'll be very quick here. I think this is a very straightforward plan in front of you. It's a simple A and R, which is a, there's two parcels there. We're just adjusting the lot line so that both lots meet the minimum zoning area required. The addresses are nine hundred Old Stage and zero Patriot Way in Centerville. The two lots currently total combined approximately five point nine five acres. They're both currently unimproved. We were adjusting the lot line so that there'll be one lot that is three point nine five acres, and that will continue to front on Old Stage with about a hundred and ninety-two feet of frontage. And the second lot will be two point zero acres, and that has approximately sixty-nine feet of frontage on Patriot's Way. Other than that, I would be happy to answer any questions that the board may have. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you very much, Mr. Eddie. Jim, does staff have anything to add on this one?
No, I'll just add that in your staff report, it reflects much of what Mr. Eddie says. The lot area is adequate, not touching the frontage, and both are serviced by a way that is accessible to each of the lots.
Excellent. I appreciate that, Jim. Look to board comments at this time. Comments, questions, concerns, starting with Ray.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have nothing here.
Okay. Appreciate that. And Tim?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Nope, no questions, no concerns.
All right. Thank you, Tim, and Steve.
So, Steve, I'm good with it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Steve. And I'm satisfied as well. We look for a motion on this item.
Mr. Chairman, I would offer a motion to endorse the plan entitled "Approval Not Required" and "Subdivision of Land at nine hundred Old Stage Road, Centerville, Massachusetts, prepared for Bay Ridge Realty LLC by Baxter &amp; I Engineering and Surveying dated sixteen December two thousand twenty-two as an approval not required plan.
Excellent. Thank you, Ray. And a second on that motion?
This is Tim. I'll second.
Thank you, Tim, and all those in favor. Ray?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
And myself, Steve Robichaud, votes aye. The matter passes. Thank you very much, Mr. Eddie.
Thank you very much, all. Have a good evening.
Same to you. And Steve, if you don't mind, our next item?
Certainly. This is a regulatory agreement between Schuesten Properties LLC seeks to enter into a regulatory agreement with the Town of Barnstable to construct thirty-four condominium units in two buildings with associated improvements at one-ten School Street and one-fifteen School Street Hyannis. The redevelopment consists of twenty-two three-bedroom units and twelve two-bedroom units. A total of seventy parking spaces will be provided. Majority of members present and voting continued from August eighth, two thousand twenty-two, in order to form a subcommittee and continued from September twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-two, October third, two thousand twenty-two, October twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-two, November fourteenth, two thousand twenty-two, and December twelfth, two thousand twenty-two. And this is a public hearing that remains open.
Excellent. Thank you, Steve. I appreciate that. This is a significant project that's had, you know, a lot of discussion. And, you know, we obviously went to a subcommittee and had multiple subcommittee meetings. We also performed a site walk with a height demonstration. I propose tonight that we receive an update from the applicant who has a few changes to share. We would then go into some forward questions related to that update and then look to have a public comment. I do not recommend we take a vote on this item this evening because three of our members are missing this evening, and I'd like them to be present for what I would consider a pretty important project. So I would recommend that we do continue this to our next meeting, at which point we could look to potentially close it out if we feel like we're at that point. So at this time, I would go to the applicant. Is the attorney Kenny present? If you'd like to walk us through the changes that you made.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And for the record, John Kenny, an attorney with the Law Office in Centerville, come before you tonight representing Schuestring Properties LLC regarding the Dockside condominium project. Here with me this evening is Stuart Bornstein, the Principal of Schuestring Properties LLC, Michael Neath from Janap Architects, and Dan Olshula, the Project Engineer from Down Cape Engineering. Mr. Chairman, before I get started, I just have a quick question or concern. Can three members miss a meeting and all mull in?
Yeah, you know, I was thinking about that question as well. Jim, could you help us out there?
Yeah, my understanding is this is a general ordinance and not a special affirmative variance that doesn't apply. The mull-in certificate rule doesn't apply to this, but we could certainly get you an opinion from our town attorney if you'd like.
Is the town attorney on tonight?
He's not on tonight. So if you feel more comfortable requesting a continuation to the next meeting, we could certainly do that as well with no discussion being had.
Um, can I have like a five-minute recess so I can have a little conference call with my client?
Absolutely.
You say it's a, there are no variances. I mean, we are, it's contract zoning, basically, and we are asking for relief. So I just want to make sure that we don't, we're not down to a four-member board.
Yeah, that's definitely a fair thing to consider. You know, where the matter asks, in my opinion, it should be continued anyways. To me, it doesn't make a difference if the presentation comes tonight or at the next meeting. You know, I could look for, Jim, would we take a quick vote for a recess, have a motion to recess?
The chairman may call a five-minute recess if you'd like.
Okay. So, yeah, I would call a five-minute recess at this point. And Mr. Kenny, take a break and let us know your thoughts.
Thank you very much.
Hey, Sarah, can you change my name? I don't know if you're there. Someone did a prank. Quiet. You gotta put it on mute so they don't hear your phone call. We've had our discussion. We're ready to talk.
Okay. Yeah, I'm just gonna, I'm gonna give it till seven eighteen just because I said five-minute recess and in case any members of the public left and are waiting.
Okay.
I'll just give it the full five.
Could ask for three minutes.
John, you just didn't realize how good you really are. We all knew it.
I didn't realize you would join us also, Dale. I would have introduced you.
No, it's no problem.
Very efficient. All right, I've got seven eighteen. So we're ending our recess, coming back. And Mr. Kenny, go ahead and give us an update.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I get, the question I have is, we've got four members tonight. If this is an issue, will the current four members be available in two weeks for the meeting? Or are we gonna be in a situation where it could be possibly, you know, we're down to three and we'll continue it again? And well, I think at least one can mull in and hopefully all three.
The way I understand it, I don't have any upcoming absences that I'm aware of for future meetings.
Great.
I don't mind. I will be present.
Excellent. Appreciate that, Steve. And I'll be here. Ray and Tim, do you guys have any reason to believe you won't be at the next meeting?
I'll be here. You're on.
Okay. Great.
So we'll at least have the four of you and hopefully the other three can mull in or if not all three, then, you know, at least one. So we will go ahead and proceed. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Excellent. Please go ahead.
After the last meeting, we kind of all had telephone conferences and discussions amongst our team. It became pretty evident to us that we did not have the support of the board of the project as last proposed. And so discussions were, do we just withdraw and wait and see what happens? Maybe there's a zoning change along the harbor or something in the future? So request a withdrawal without prejudice? Or, bless you, or can we take one final look at the project and see if we can make some concessions and address the concerns we heard from your board? And we have done that, and we've submitted revised regulatory agreement and revised plans. The biggest thing clearly was the height of the building, or the buildings. And so we asked Mr. Bornstein to go back and put pencil and paper and ask him, can you eliminate one floor and make this project work? The other thing we heard was you didn't really like the flat roof. It really kind of detracted from the beauty of the buildings, and most people liked it with the doghouse dormers and the more stylish roof. And so we went back to that. So we, the original proposal was for five and a half stories with the more stylish roof line with the doghouse dormers. Those buildings were on one-ten School Street, they would have been sixty-eight point eighty-one feet, and one-fifteen School Street would have been seventy-one point seventy-six feet. We reduced each building by a floor, so we're down to four and a half floors. And the new height, it's gone, one-ten School Street's gone from sixty-eight point eighty-one feet to fifty-nine point ninety-eight feet. And one-fifteen School Street's gone from seventy-one point seventy-six feet to sixty-two point thirty-eight feet. That's from the original proposal to now. On the redlined copy of the draft regulatory agreement, you'll see we had been down to sixty-two point one feet on one-ten School Street and sixty-six point oh-two feet on one-fifteen School Street. That was with the flat roof. So we put the more stylish roof back on, reduced it by one floor, and each building's been reduced approximately nine feet from the original submission. By doing that, we've reduced the number of units from a total of thirty-four for the project down to twenty-nine. There will be eighteen three-bedroom units instead of twenty-two and eleven two-bedroom units instead of twelve. So by eliminating the first floor in each of the two buildings, we are eliminating four three-bedroom units and only one two-bedroom unit, which I think is significant from your concerns that I heard. The East Parcel will consist of fifteen units instead of eighteen. The East Parcel, which is the Dockside Restaurant Parcel, would have four two-bedroom units instead of five and eleven three-bedroom units instead of thirteen. So the Dockside Parcel will be down a total of three units, one two-bedroom and two three-bedrooms. The West Parcel, which is the old motel site, would have fourteen units instead of sixteen units, seven two-bedroom units, which is no change, and seven three-bedroom units instead of nine, so there's a reduction of two three-bedroom units on that parcel. In order to get there, we're asking for a minor concession, a couple of minor concessions from the town. The first is the intersection of School Street and South Street. Mr. Bornstein's willing to do almost all the work there, and he's asking the town to be responsible to install any pedestrian signals and beacons. Other than that, he will take care of that for the Department of Public Works plan that was submitted as part of the project. And the only thing we're asking the town to do is the beacons and any pedestrian signals. The other thing we're asking for a concession is the off-site affordable housing units. We're still proposing five off-site affordable housing units. We're still proposing all five as three-bedroom units, which was what during our discussions in the subcommittee, the woman from the Housing Committee made it clear that she really wanted three-bedroom units. That was their greatest need. So Mr. Bornstein is proposing to supply five off-site at three-ten Barnstable Road. Three of them will be at sixty-five percent AMI. The concession we're asking for is to allow for two at eighty percent AMI. Previously, those also had been at sixty-five percent AMI. By reducing the buildings down one floor each, our overall density goes from, goes to twenty-two units per acre down from twenty-six. The one-ten School Street, the Dockside Building site, goes from twenty-four units down to twenty units per acre, and the old motel site at one-fifteen School Street goes from twenty-eight units to twenty-five units per acre. So in essence, that is, that's the sum and substance of the proposal. It's reducing the buildings by one floor. I'm gonna ask the architects to kind of bring up the visuals of those buildings, and I believe that you kind of saw the movie. I'm gonna ask them to walk through and kind of point out the features and highlights of that little proposal prepared by them. I don't want to call it a movie. I'm not sure what to call it, but a visual presentation. So either Dale or Mike, if you could maybe first bring up the renderings of the buildings and then go to the visual aid.
I'll try it. Go ahead, Mike, if you, I have the
If you have the
Walk, I have the walkthrough up, but I don't have the renderings. I believe Dan is the only one capable of sharing screen for your team. Dan, if you have the links.
I thought you were gonna say we're in trouble, Jim.
So these are, I'm sorry, this is Mike Neath from Janap Architects. And Dan's flipping through some of the renderings here. This is the view from the harbor side. Again, it's been, we've brought back the more characteristic coastal vernacular roofs with the pitches and the dormers. And dramatically reduced the height on this side by a full story while still maintaining all the rich detail that was in the original submission. And if you want to flip through a couple of the others, I'll just, so again, this is the, this is a view from the South Street corner, looking down towards the harbor. And you can see we've, the lower buildings on the site are along South Street to really step down to the neighborhood and provide a smaller scale to that more public face. And it really kind of, you can see here how it really creates like a gateway to the harbor and frames that beautiful view through with the, each kind of tower element on each corner. And yeah, this is just the other corner you can see from South Street again. And we could probably just kind of switch to the little movie that we made. If you can bring that up, Dan, I'd appreciate that. This starts up at South Street and then kind of meanders along South Street to give you a couple of views from up high on South Street. And then we'll kind of take you down the hill, looking right, looking left, to look at each parcel. And then we'll spin around and kind of pause to look back at it from about where the ferry terminal ticket office is. It's a large file, so it might take a minute for that to load. This is, it's running a little herky-jerky. It might take just a second to catch up to it. The reason for showing this is really just to, you know, we can talk about the math of height. John was very great at going through all the stats on this. But what a person really perceives from eye level and the level of scale provided by the intense level of articulation and detail that Stuart wants to provide on this building, it really takes the sense of scale down to a much more human level. And you can see again, these rich tower elements on the corners we've maintained. And that, the higher building was at the back, and that's really reduced by about nine foot nine inches down from what it was. Here we can see we're coming along the, looking at the West Parcel, that little square-ish thing next to the pergola is That little square-ish thing next to the pergola is actually the handicap lift. That'll actually be a glass enclosure on that. The, you can see here, looking back at the East Parcel, the Dockside Parcel. Again, just kind of showing off some of that, a nice detail on the buildings and how it has a nice pedestrian feel along that sidewalk that Stuart's going to provide, where there isn't one now. The entrance to the lower garage there. Lots of access points up onto the elevated deck. Again, with these lower scale elements like the pergolas that really take down the sense of height of the building even lower. And we'll kind of pause here and that's, that's the movie. You like to call that an animated walkthrough. And it's, it does, it gets as close to really how a person would perceive it at eye level. Rather than something abstract like a building elevation that just looks at it flat. So, it was very important for Stuart to provide this to you to really show off the sculptural qualities of this building. Most multifamily buildings of this type are large rectangles with flat roofs. Broken, just broken up with all kinds of mishmash at different sidings. I think you've all seen that going up all over the state. He really wants to make a real gesture to the town here by bringing in the rich details of the Cape and these classic building details. You don't see this on developments. So, this is really a special project for us as architects. But I think he's really providing something nice for the town here. And it was important for him to really show this, the sculptural qualities of this building.
You'll notice as you pass through it, there was a lot of design time and there's a lot of cost to keep the building very open and penetrating in a number of ways. When you look to the left here, you can see between the buildings. You know, that'll come up in just a minute. To the right, there's no large expanses of facade, but everything is open and has, you know, depth to it and scaled elements. Not, although the building overall is larger than those in the neighborhood, trying to bring that scale to it.
Mike and Dale, Dan Ojel, or anything you want to add?
I think you covered it rather well. The, I don't have much to add to that. The site plan zoning summary does pick up. You can hear me okay?
Yes.
You know, the exact dimensions, I put them to the hundredth of a foot because the architects use quarter inches. And so, just to be absolutely precise with it. But in my opinion, bringing that down a story, but retaining the nice approved peak that the Historic Commission approved is really the win here. It reduces the density, it makes excess parking, some of those concerns over parking should now be abated by a significant reduction in the number of units, but no reduction in the number of parking spaces provided. So, you can see there's, you know, 29 provided, where only 23 are required on the west. And similarly, 41 provided, where only 25 are required on the east. So, a big excess in the number of parking spaces. That does include some, you know, nose to tail in the under area, but still overparked now per the zoning bylaw pretty heartily. So, and with the loading areas. And again, all the street scape improvements contemplated, except for the little flashing beacons, which the town is very good at installing, you know, if and when they decide it is appropriate. So, we think it's a nice improvement aesthetically and with the density reductions and the relative parking increases. Hopefully, some of the concerns of the abutters are abated. And this could proceed, you know, at the next hearing. Thank you.
Just going to address parking next? You did a floppy.
Oh, sure.
Stuart, anything you want to add?
Yeah, I would like to. We all rent space on this condominium we call Earth. Whether we own it or rent it, we're really only renting it for a period of time. And you can leave a mark on what you want to put on it. It's a piece of art. I don't look at it as a building. A piece of art. I'm big on the art supporting down on the Cape and other places. I collect art. And I got to tell you, I look at this thing as a piece of art for the harbor. Nobody will ever reproduce this. It's expensive. It's a very marginal deal, but it's not about the money. I wanted to build something that made a statement. And I think the architects that we hired, and I might tell you, I went to 86 different firms to find them. They did a superb job. I ran this through everybody in town and nobody disliked it. I heard what you said, you could probably approve four stories, but not five. And we spent a lot of money converting this down to four stories. We spent three days crushing numbers and it's, that losing that, those five units are significant. The infrastructure cost has not changed whatsoever. And I'm building the town a superior product. You'll never have another one like this that I can think of in Hyannis. And as the architect says, everybody's building these square wood units, put as many apartments in as they can and generate dollars, which is what they have to do. But this is a different product. And I hope the board can look at it and enjoy the beauty of it. It's pure beauty. It's art. Now, when you look at it as a building, look at it as art. Because all the rich details in it, from the copper roofs to the trim, the sun, the lighting, and there's so many different details that we can't show you in a picture that we do. This is built for, no maintenance outside for 50 years. It's really a phenomenal, if we get to build it and you get permission to build it, it'll be a real positive for the town of Hyannis. The town of Hyannis could use some good positives downtown here. But it's a piece of art and I thank you for taking the time to look at it.
Thank you, Stuart. Mr. Chairman, that'll conclude our presentation for this evening. We're happy to answer any questions the board may have.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Attorney Kenny? And at this time, we'll go to the board for comments, questions related to the presentation. Ray?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I wanted to congratulate Mr. Bornstein's team that put together that visual. I had a flashback to my former life because we put together targeting packages just like that to take out Osama bin Laden and some of his buddies. You guys, if you could get a security clearance, I got some people you can talk to. One question, I just, I missed it. Dan, could you rerun how the parking ratio breaks out again, please?
Sure. So, it's on the first sheet, the layout sheet. But just to quickly reiterate, we're down to, on number 115, which is the west one on the left as you look at it. We're down to 14 units there. One and a half dwelling units per would give us 21 spaces required. Then one out of 10 for, you need for visitors. So, that's another two, so it's 21 plus two is 23 required. We've actually got 29 provided. So, that's, you know, a good excess. That does include a couple of van handicap, which are negotiable whether or not we need those. There's 27 under the building and two at street level. And we've also got a nice loading area on that one. On the east, that's 15 units. And that's, times 1.5 would be 23. And then for the 23 divided by 10 is another two, rounds up to 25 spaces required on that one. And we've actually, because it's a wider building, we've got 41. There's 33 under the building. So, it's a, and then there's also a nice drop-off area. And then at a grade, we've got eight spaces. The three near the wetland that you recall when the conservation approved it, they went from four to three on the front. And then there's five that are closer to schools, closer to South Street. So, a nice excess on both. Again, just to recap, 23 required, 29 provided on the west and 25 required, 41 provided on the east.
Thanks, Dan. Nothing else, Mr. Chairman?
Thank you, Ray. Appreciate that. Tim?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And thank you to the applicant for the changes and providing that great video walkthrough. As Ray said, it was very helpful to visualize the changes that were presented and the overall just kind of massing of the buildings and how all the elements tie together and some of the breakups that are tough to see on just a 2D elevation on a sheet of paper. Ray asked the question about parking and Dan answered that. I wanted to also ask Dan, just because I don't think we got a chance to get too far into it last time, was to walk us through the road and the parking and the previous changes that happened there. And I think now that there is no proposed change or to the road width to make it narrower. So, I just kind of wanted to see if Dan could pull up that site plan and just kind of walk us through each curb cut and kind of the width through the corridor.
Sure. I'd be happy to through the chair. So, you should be looking at the layout site plan or landscape site plan now. Has that come up on the screen yet?
Yep.
Okay. So, the improvements up on the street are from the very west lot line to the very east, grind and overlay the entire street. And we're providing crosswalks with curb cuts, handicap accessible curb cuts at the four corner points. All new curbing along in here and over to this point here, at which point there's a nice existing concrete sidewalk with granite curb that does not need to be rebuilt. But we're rebuilding eight foot wide on this side. There was a request to do the kind of a shared path or set it up for a wider through Fair Initiative. Transitions down to five here. There's a narrower sidewalk on site. You've got five-foot sidewalks all along the frontage of the property, all handicap accessible curb cuts, 2% maximum cross slope, which is a nice improvement over what's there now, which is not a very good sidewalk, I guess we would say. The, that ties into the paved sidewalk at the end here. There's the three spaces here are curb cut. This entrance here, it goes down underneath the east building. This entrance right here, curb cut goes down underneath the west building. The fire department had requested fire department connections at the corners of the building here and at the corners of the building here. So, we're actually providing four fire department connections as well as the hydrant, which is centrally located. The curb cut on the west is a large loading zone here. And then there's two spaces that are available here. So, we would imagine Peapod and, you know, Uber Eats and those sort of folks would use these loading zones. And there's a loading zone on the east side as well. Of course, if there's a vacant spot, they could tuck in there. And cleaning people and so forth will have pass cards to get down beneath in their owner's unit. They could probably take the extra spot in their respective owner's spot and take the elevator up with the cleaning supplies. There's a handicap ramp on the northeast side of the building here. On the west side, instead of a ramp, as Mike mentioned, there's a clear glass elevator that just saves some space and allows a little aesthetic nicer than the large ramp feature on the west side. So, that's it, all new. And then I should point out, perhaps on the first sheet, it shows it better, but we're coming down full-depth rebuild to the limit of work here. And we would also have the offer put to just grind and overlay down to the end, just so it looks nice and clean. John put that in his offer and we're happy to provide that. But the full depth over, is the extent of the water main work and some of the sewer work will be chewing up the pavement pretty well. So, we'll take it right down. Don't mess around with patching. We'll actually remove all the gravel and surface asphalt and recompact the gravel base to full width and place new asphalt. So, it's what you call a full-depth rebuild, the entire length of School Street down to this point here and then overlay the rest down to the harbor, which is in good shape already. So, I think that covers it, but certainly glad to answer any points that I missed. Thank you.
The light poles also, Danny. All the underground.
Unchanged and from the prior approval. Obviously, we've got overhead wires on South Street. But on the utility sheets, you can see those do need to remain because there's overhead wires heading up and down. But everything on South Street, we're actually pulling underground and going to run underground electric is called out. All overhead wires and poles, all underground. We'll replace all the overhead there. So, you've got a nice clean street scape. And they've put nice lighted handrails and small scale bollards along the street to give a nice glow and light up the street without being overpowering. So, that should be a nice addition to the street scape.
Great. Thank you. And I think I see that you have a 25-foot road width and that is the same, about the same as our existing road width?
Yeah, it's probably a little wider right there. And then it does taper just a bit to 22, but a full 22-foot curb to curb in here, where it's a nice straightaway, where you're making the turns, turning movements. It's often helpful to have another few feet. So, that's what we flared it just a bit there at the entrance.
Okay, great. Thank you. I don't have any further questions. Thank you, Chair.
Great. Thank you, Tim. And Steve?
Steve, I think it's, you know, the fact that though, using my own experience, seeing the initial iteration of the project five or six years ago at this point, which, you know, architecturally and a number of other reasons, was not appealing whatsoever. To have it come back to its form now and, you know, to have the ability to miraculously still make it work with reduced floors, I think is definitely a positive step. I think it's, you know, from the building standpoint, it will be the most attractive building set that has been built in the town of Barnstable in many years. Seems like overall reduction of about 15% in both height and number of units. And clearly, you know, not everyone's going to be happy regardless. But in terms of the concessions that were made, while maintaining, you know, significant attractive features, I think is very important. I'll reserve comments, you know, till we have our next meeting. The only thing I will say is, the only disappointment was I didn't get to see the cyber steward riding a bicycle in the that probably would have closed the deal for me, but
Next time.
Maybe next time we can do that. Thank you, Steve.
He's in development.
Well said, Steve. Thank you. I appreciate that. I only have one question. Dan, do you mind just bringing that image back up one more time? I just wanted to ask about the trash removal. If you look at the trash facilities on the east parcel, it seems to me, would a trash truck drive into that? Or are these kind of barrels that are hand-loaded? How's that going to work?
Yeah, so you're correct, the latter. We've set it up for those, like the typical rolling bins that you would have in your garage. We've set it up for those like the typical rolling bins that you would have in your garage too deep. Along in both sides there, so that everybody, there's there's plenty of of roll offs. And then they'll just simply bring the smaller truck. And put it in the loading zone and wheel them in probably twice a week in the summer anyway. Just to keep the keep everything moving and and keep the odors down. But those nice tight sheds, well built, nicely detailed, sprinkled if necessary. And in that manner, keep the traffic off of off of South Street and on the dead end School Street.
Okay, great. And they'll just wheel them over from the west side trash area.
Correct. Yep, yep. So a little, you know, a little bit more work, but again, they're they're quiet bearings and not too much slamming around, not like they're tin cans anymore. They're just plastic units. And we think that's the most efficient way to deal with them.
Great. Okay, I appreciate that. So at this time, we're going to go to public comment. And want to have everybody a chance to speak this evening. We do have quite a few people for public comments, so if you could keep it to three to four minutes, that would be great. I also want to note that. Please make your comments new information. Anything that's been stated in any of these meetings is a part of the record. So you know, for the for the sake of everyone's time, please limit your public comments to new new comments, new information. As again, everything that's been stated is part of the record. So if we could start, David, are you going to? Go through the list of public comment for us?
I can. I know there was a a couple of people here. I think Laura Cronin or. Lori Crowley was here for this item, I believe.
Yep, I was.
Um, if you'd like to go first, you can go.
Okay, I'm here to urge the planning board to not approve this project or any waivers from dimensional bulk requirements, including. Building height and story setbacks and lock coverage standards, as well as waivers associated. With density, parking design standards and dimensions, lighting and landscape improvements. These waivers do not benefit Hyannis residents, but only benefit the developer. I read the developer has sidestepped having affordable housing on this project. To another location, not on the water, but on Barnstable Road in Hyannis. How blatant and insensitive to people who are less fortunate? I'd like to know also where I can access the traffic study done for this project. Considering the backed up traffic now in this area, not to mention the many emergency vehicles coming in and out. Two, how will this affect Hyannis waters with the sewer issues we have? Three, also, isn't the affordable housing part of this project? And I'd like to see those pieces of art. How have we not seen any pictures of the pieces of art? Of how beautiful and luxurious those five units will be, their parking and their landscape. It makes me wonder how many planning board members live in Hyannis that will be affected by this project. Let's spread the wealth of new apartment buildings to all the villages. I understand it helps in taxes, but at what and whose expense? Are twenty nine, and I repeat, twenty nine units? Most likely not going to be owned by people who live here full time or contribute to our workforce worth it? Please do not approve this project. Thank you.
Thank you, Lori. Appreciate that. David, who do you have next?
I don't have any other specific people that I took down, but if you're here to speak for this item, now is the time.
I see Roberta Elizabeth with her hand up. Go ahead, Roberta.
I think you're muted.
Yeah, Roberta, we can't hear you. Connect the audio.
Uh, someone is there. Someone is there.
Okay.
At least she has her hand raised as well.
Roberta, now try on mute.
Uh, hold on. Oh, here we go.
Okay, I'm sorry, I'm back.
Okay, there you go.
Yeah, she'll hear you.
I'm sorry. Uh, gosh, what a beautiful, what a beautiful. Okay, here's what I have to say. Wait a minute, let me turn my TV off. I've got an echo. Okay, this is what I need to say. I really want Stu. I want Stu to hear me. Stu, the Dockside Restaurant. I was heartbroken. I was heartbroken that 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 restaurant had to leave. The food was wonderful. That is a reminds me of Patty Page. Sitting by the the sea, the public can sit by and it's the best view, the absolute best view. To sit by and have a wonderful meal and watch the ferry come in and out. And that is what I want to protect for the public. I want to see that restaurant still there. And with these beautiful condominiums, but I want that restaurant there for the public because what's happening? With all this these high density development is they're forgetting to keep old Cape Cod still there. The restaurant should still be there so that the public can still enjoy that gorgeous view that you'd be taking away from us, Stu. Please. I mean, I used to sing and play my mandolin under your tree down in Barnstable Village before you bought that house. That was my quiet spot under your tree. If you look on Facebook at Cape Cod Bluegrass. Your tree is there. I miss old Cape Cod. Let's keep. Let's let's bring, you know, respect what is old here and. It's beautiful. I think it's a beautiful. It's not like the what's coming behind my house, the Lennar, that's just ugly as scares the heck out of me because it's right outside my bedroom. Window and I'm going to have light pollution the rest of my life. I've been getting chest pains over Lennar. But what you're doing is beautiful. The only criticism I have. Is that you're taking away the best view of Hyannis for the public. It will no longer be available for the public and that is wrong. Okay? I don't know what else to say. But I would like that addressed before this passes because. That dockside should have never. I mean, that that was what the the those people that worked there. Were wonderful, a wonderful staff. They really ran a great business. And it was a wonderful place to bring. My friends, any friends. It was just a beautiful spot that has history. And it's a beautiful view that now. The way this is designed, the public no no longer can enjoy, only the wealthy can. And that's not right. That's wrong. So that's that's a I have a big bone to pick with you, Stu, about that. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Roberta. And from from here, I'm just gonna call on on people. Mary LeBlanc, would you like to make a public comment?
If I understand that everything that's previously been said about density, still huge. Huge out of. Out of scope of all of the rest of the buildings in that area and the precedence it sets. That's what we want to do.
Understood. Appreciate it. And Felicia?
Thank you. I just hope that I want to say it was a great sell job with the video drama thing and nobody's ever said that this is. A um. An an ugly. Project. It's never been ugly. It's always been a terrific thing and kudos to the architectural team that put this together. It's just in the wrong location because there's not enough room for it. And you took a lot of liberty with showing South Street as a. Nice little friendly residential one way, one lane road. And the lapping water on the south side, yeah, when it backs up to a parking lot. So it was a good sell job, but it didn't work on me. But it is a gorgeous building. It just is in the wrong location. So. I have some comments specific to the reg agreement and I hope you guys can discuss this. First of all, on. I'll get through them as fast as I as I can. What is the downtown implementation district mentioned in the third paragraph on page one? Is that the same as the growth incentive zone? Page two, first paragraph. And I did email these to Karen. But it was just shortly before the meeting, so she does have a copy of this and I'm sorry. I was very late in getting my my this project done, so I really apologize. I didn't get this out to everybody. Page two, first paragraph, no mention of spaces allotted for delivery and other commercial services. In the reg agreement, I saw them on the plans, but it didn't say that on in the paragraph. Page two, second paragraph indicates compliance with design and infrastructure plan or the DIP. I strongly disagree that the scale of this project. Complies with the DIP. And I have concerns that the cement fiber shingles may not be consistent with the design and infrastructure plan also. So. The scale definitely does not comply with the DIP, even though you said it did. There's no mention or description of what is expected in phase one and phase two of the build out. I believe this regulatory agreement, which also serves as a development agreement. Should include this information. It should include all site improvements for each phase, what time light each phase would have. And when each will be completed, it should also state if the development for some strange reason is not completed, what type of restoration of the property would be expected in its place. Page eleven, number twenty two, which concludes the list of benefits to the town. Number D. Is listed as a benefit to the town, which is the new water mains. Yes, of course, this will improve the infrastructure for the Hyannis Water Company. But the upgrade was needed. In order to serve the increased density in seventy six new bedrooms in this location. So. I don't consider this a benefit to the town. I consider it a benefit to the project. So that they can have some fresh water, which would is nice at the right pressure points, et cetera. So this should be removed from the list of. Benefits to the town because it doesn't benefit the public. It benefits the tenants. K, electric plug in stations. Why are these a benefit to the town? How many are there? There's no statement of how many they're going to be. Are they available to the public to use, even though they're on private property? Why is this listed? As a public benefit? I don't think they should be part of the list at all. L, low water usage plumbing fixtures a benefit to the condominium owners, not a benefit to the residents of Barnstable. These should be removed from the list of benefits. Overall, there are not enough benefits to this town to grant the number of waivers the applicant is requesting. The whole point of a reg agreement is that. The town is supposed to be benefiting in some unbelievable way. So that it's okay to waive the zoning. So this density is still too great. It's. If you waive the density to the requested level, this project is over three hundred percent denser than what the law allows. The law being zoning. The height allowed is is two and a half stories, you know that. The four and a half is a hundred and eighty percent higher than what is allowed. Maximum height and feet is thirty five. We all know that this has been reduced. But they're still a hundred sixty five to a hundred eighty five percent higher than the law allowed. All landscaping for above ground parking areas and buffers are waived or requested to be waived. On page fifteen, item K, there's no specification here as to what the parking aisle width will be. It says they want to reduce it from twenty four feet. But it doesn't say what the reduction is. Is it six inches? Is it two feet? I mean, where's the accountability and who's going to know what that is and when it's right? According to what I saw around here, there will be no street trees if I've read the waivers right. Page sixteen, the applicant is asking the planning board to waive a new certificate of appropriateness from the Hyannis Main Street Waterfront Historic District Committee. I don't know if that's the purview of the planning board or not. I don't know the answer to the question. I think I can see the town council doing that, but I don't know that if it's the purview of the planning board. So. This is a new plan from what was originally submitted to them. Whether you recommend waiving them going before that committee again, I don't know. If that's appropriate or not. Page seventeen, number thirty, this document indicates there is to be a full time property manager, but there's no indication that the applicant or its successors will provide contact info, identification of who it is. Where they will be. I would think that the town needs this information as proof that this has happened and that this is so and that there needs to be some. Some indication of of who to contact on this, just to say that you're going to have one. You need you need to know how this happens. And what happens if and when, God forbid, this project is not completed as specified? There's no indication in the regulatory agreement as to. What what steps happen at that time? So overall, the project's benefits to the community, in my opinion, do not await the detriment. Mainly the height and density, as we already know. In an earlier meeting, I just want to say there were questions from planning board members, both of whom are here tonight. As to why the height in the Harbor District is still two and a half stories, even with the new zoning that's coming up. So I just wanted to address that. And that is because the answer to the question is to maintain the harbor view. The history around the harbor has been in this town undevelopment versus development, if you must know. I live on the other side of High Line and I've lived here since nineteen fifty three. Dirt roads at the time, but we won't get into that right now. Okay? The history around the harbor has been undevelopment so that we can increase the public's view and access to the harbor. Think about it. In order to create Azleton Park. Six houses were removed. Three to four on Ocean Street, one right on the corner of South Street and two more on South Street on the corner and some really big trees. In order to create the harbor overlook, four housing structures were removed. One next to the phone company, which used to be the elementary school. Another one right on the corner where the stop line is right now. And a little cottage and then another house where the seniors, our first senior center was. So the idea. Of purposefully allowing a sixty five foot structure. Even though it is reduced. And even though it's beautiful. It's a hundred and eighty percent higher than what is allowed to be built on the waterfront side of the street. It negates every positive action the town has taken over the past fifty five years. There's no overwhelming long term benefit to the public that justifies allowing these density and height waivers. Please remember that zoning is not guidance. It's statutory law. And I know you're in a tough position to make these decisions. I ask you to reject the requests for the density, height and landscape waivers. If you accept and approve this reg agreement as written. You'll be setting a really dangerous precedent along the harbor. Side. The waterfront. So I thank you for your time, your consideration. I know it's very hard because it is a beautiful building. It just needs another acre or two of land someplace else where everybody can just go, wow. Thank you.
Thank you, Felicia. Appreciate all that. And Laura Cronin, do you have any comments to make?
Yes, good evening. Thank you, Chairman Robichaud, for this opportunity to speak tonight. I did have a letter on file from October twenty first that you have that is there, so I won't repeat. All of the items on there. However, I do like to comment on many of the. Things that Felicia and some of the other. Speakers have said earlier today. I do think that the project is beautiful. I there is no doubt that the building and. Even the floor plans are are wonderful. It's just, again, it's in the wrong place. For the harbor. The density is still too high. You go from a seven up to twenty two and twenty five per acre. That's a reason why we do have the zoning. The zoning is to protect the harbor. It is to protect that particular area. Granting these waivers allows this precedent to be set. For other areas, other buildings or other properties on that waterfront. And I think what I would also like to. Suggest is that that the next meeting be in public, if you could put it in a public forum. These Zoom meetings for me personally are just very confusing and it's it's a. It's very difficult to concentrate and see what's going on as the public would be in. In the live public, you'd be able to see the communication, be able to maybe ask more questions. You might even be able to get some. More input into what would make it work or where it could work better. But. But right now, doing these Zoom calls, I think you are missing, the public is missing the opportunity to speak. And to participate in this hugely important decision. For the town of Barnstable and for the village of Hyannis. So I encourage you and urge you to please. Make these in person. For others to be able to participate in. You can see at the beginning, when you're sitting in a breakout room, you don't always have the opportunity to see what's going on. And watching it on channel eighteen. It's totally different environment. And you are, I think, discriminating against the public that would like to say something, but they're not comfortable with this environment. And lastly, is if there's. Is there a staff report outlining, because it is kind of confusing to see where the changes are. From what was there from the October twenty fourth or even the December one to where we are today. Is there a staff report that outlines all of the wave? Is there a staff report that outlines all of the waivers that we would be looking for today? I did look at the regulatory agreement, tried to get through as much as I could, and then I saw there was another update even today, at least there's a date on it that says it's the 23rd, but I don't know what's been changed. So it would be helpful if we could have some kind of a report outlining all of the different, the current waivers that are being asked now that they're down to the four and a half stories. Again, it's still two stories above what is supposed to be there on the harbor and in this area. It just sets a bad precedent, and I think it just, you can't take it back once it's there. Again, I do appreciate the fact that the building itself isn't as wonderful, but I just think it needs to go, should be someplace else where the density and where those units per acre can be easily fit. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Laura. And the best place for those resources is on the town website, the planning board page. I know the regulatory agreement is up there, the draft. And Jim, do you share the staff reports as well on the website?
Yes, the staff reports are up there, but we don't end the staff report. I don't believe we reiterate each of the waivers as they are spelled out specifically in the regulatory agreement drafts that are also on the website.
Yeah, the regulatory agreement does outline all the waivers. You just have to get through a few pages to get to that, so.
A point of comment?
Sure, absolutely.
Because I did go on the website, did find the regulatory agreement, I did go through it, but again, based on what was said tonight, some of those things look like they may have changed. And then, so you don't update that staff report after the regulatory, as the regulatory agreement progresses?
This is Chairman, we do, and I did misspeak. Actually, in the staff report, there are the waivers, that's right. So each of the waivers are in the staff report, but also each and every iteration of the draft regulatory agreement is, once we get it, we give it to the planning board and then we post it online for the public to see.
So where would I find those updated staff reports?
Right, where you found the draft regulations, right on the planning board's website under new projects, under regulatory agreements, dockside, and all those will be right there. And I'm happy to help you, Laura.
Oh, thank you. Yeah, I might need, I might ask you to, thank you so much. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Laura, and thank you, Jim. I appreciate that. Let's see, Attorney Lawler?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm here with Wayne Crocker again, Wayne Kirk again, I'm sorry. So before I get into it, I just briefly just want to talk about, a little bit about some of the language, not bad language, but the use of language in this and listening to everybody and saying, oh, it's, you know, there's a reduction, you know, from five and a half to four and a half. And, you know, I heard one planning board member, you know, previously mentioned plans from a previous attempt to get approvals three or four years ago. That's all they are, is their plans. It's a concept. There's never been a five and a half-story building on there, there's never been a four and a half-story building. What exists is a vacant lot on one side and a one-story restaurant on the other. So to say there's been a reduction really is, it's falling into kind of a, a little bit of a trap of language of what was proposed in the past and what wasn't, and what was rejected in the past. So really, you know, what you need, I think this board respectfully, you know, is to look at it, is what's being requested here is the construction of a four and a half-story building on a vacant lot and a four and a half-story building on a lot that houses a one-story restaurant, okay? There's no reduction from five and a half. I mean, you could have proposed 20 and then reduce it down to four. I mean, it's just all a fallacy. And that being said, the, and looking at, and again, and to not reiterate some of Felicia's points, which were excellent, is that you have this lot and one-story building located in a zoning area that allows for two and a half stories, and that's it. Now, there is a regulatory agreement which allows someone to come in under extraordinary circumstances and ask for waivers, and they have done that. Now, you also have, as this is going forward, simultaneously with the town, you have the town attempting to initiate zoning changes to the Hyannis area, okay? And if you look at them, you know, Jim and Elizabeth have done incredible work in proposing these zoning changes, is very comprehensive, very detailed, and there's two things that jump out at me for this particular project. With respect to this area, critical area of the harbor, there are no changes to the building height. Now, in the other areas, if I'm wrong, someone correct me. In the other areas, though, the biggest change is allowing height to go to three and a half stories or possibly four, and again, under unique circumstances. Nowhere, nowhere in the zoning bylaw does it provide for four and a half stories that's being proposed. So right now, and that again, is kind of almost like the plans, that's still amorphous because it's never been approved by the town council and hasn't been enacted into law. So right now, the only hard, the hard floor we have is two and a half stories on the zoning, and we have this proposal to increase it to four. No one's ever mentioned decreasing it anything in addition to four. There's one exception, there's a hospital. Now, we all can agree that we need a hospital, and with the economics of medicine today, that's a very unique and special cutout exemption. And I don't think anybody will argue that high-end condominiums are more important than a healthcare facility and a comprehensive, and a hospital. So that's all I'm going to talk about that. So with respect to what's there, but also what our zoning professionals are proposing, it's just, it's just too much. And to, you know, and even with the reduction, I just fell into the trap myself. Even with a four and a half-story building, okay, there is no reduction. Even into a four and a half-story building with all these units, there's 70 parking spaces for 76 bedroom units. Now, about, close to 10 of those are double space, you have to back in and back out, and nothing for visitors. So the parking, and now whether that, and then with respect to the zoning, well, those zoning, it does, because the zoning talks about units and not spaces, but it also talked about a parcel where there would not be so many exemptions in the zoning, where you'd be able to go up four and a half stories instead of two and a half stories. So you have to look what's being, what's being offered. Now, the problem with the street and the traffic heading to the water, that still exists, but with, you know, it's still a four and a half-story building on the tallest point in the harbor, or two, and that is just, it's just too big, the massing is too much. And one other item, eventually, if something does get recommended to the town council, one of our other concerns is, and I don't know if the board would address this with the applicant, is construction timeframes. Wouldn't they be allowed to have construction ongoing June, July, and August? I know, for instance, there's many communities that have construction restrictions during the summer months. You have the craziness of the summer here with High Line, you have the boatyard, and you have all this other stuff. You would have massive cranes on both sides of the, of the area and would virtually be inaccessible in the summertime if construction was allowed to occur, if this, if anything is approved. I think another, something that this board should look at would be some type of a construction pause, again, if something is approved, and should talk to the applicant about that, where construction would not be permitted in June, July, and August. And I know Wayne Kirk will also want to speak, but the traffic remains a concern, the height absolutely remains a concern, and I thank you.
Thank you very much, Attorney Lawler. Wayne, would you like to speak?
Yes. I don't want to go on and just repeat everything that Dave just said, but I hope it's sinking into because I don't understand, well, if the planning board were to say to me, yes, in our minds, we're going to resell the harbor to be a new height, we were going to go from two and a half stories to three and a half, or maximum four stories, whatever you were going to do, I could see letting, letting this applicant proceed with it. But if you're not planning to do that for the harbor, then what, why would we make this, this spot zoning change here now? It just doesn't seem logical that we're looking at all this zoning and then we're ignoring it before it even passes. So I have, I have great difficulty with that. And the reason I do is the precedent is going to be wild, and if you want that precedent to stick, say so. Tell us, the rest of you guys that go to do something along the harbor, you'll get the same waivers that this applicant is getting, and you'll get the same, that's the same kind of treatment because to fall for this phony thing where somebody says they want six stories and then you give them five or four, or they want five and a half in this case, and you're giving them four or four and a half, that's something anybody would do any place in town, but in this case, you're buying it. Are you going to buy it for everybody? I hope you are because you can't just do one, what you wouldn't do for one person, what you wouldn't do for the next. So the zoning and the precedent we're setting is, just seems contrary to what I see being proposed to the town by your own committee.
You know what I'm saying?
Well, I would like to know your intentions, and I'm done.
Sorry, say that again, Wayne.
Well, I say I'm done, but it would be good if the public, or I would like to know your intentions. What is the future zoning of Hyannis Harbor? Is it going to be four and a half stories, or are you going to hold it to two and a half and you pick the highest point in the whole harbor to make an exception? It just doesn't make a lot of sense to me. If you tell us that's what you're going to do, then there's something to be thought about.
Okay. Well, thank you, appreciate that. Just looking through the list, I see C Pamela's iPad. Do you have any comments on this item? Okay, and I also see somebody listed just his iPad. Basically, if there's anybody else on that would like to make a public comment, please make yourself known. Okay, not seeing responses there. Gordon Starr, do you have any comments to make?
Okay. I'll second, okay.
Steve, I also was curious about that question about the construction moratorium, if that would be brought to the attention of the applicant.
I, yeah, I think that's something that we should consider, and, you know, we'll look to speak on that further.
This is Lori Crowley. I just want to know, is the affordable housing unit that has been moved over away from the project, I just want to know, is that part of the project? Is the project including the affordable housing units?
Yes, yes.
And if so, why are we not seeing the structure of that as well as we are seeing everything else? So I guess that would be important to know.
Yes, thank you. The plans for that project have been included into the record in previous meetings, so it's actually five units that would be offsite, and some good detail and discussion I think will place on those. So I just wanted to state that. Just one final last call for any additional public comment, last chance for this evening, anybody else with any new comment. Okay, seeing none, again, we look to, you know, speak on this further at the next meeting with our full board. And Attorney Kenny, I think at this point, we would seek a continuation from a board member, a motion to continue. Do you have anything to add before we go for that?
No, I'll respond to public comment at the next meeting when we have a full board and if had an opportunity to review this hearing.
Excellent, thank you. I know the board members that aren't present will be looking forward to watching this meeting and reviewing the materials. At this point, we would seek a motion to continue.
Chairman, I would make a motion to continue RA 2022-002 Dockside Residence, 110 School Street and 115 School Street to February 13th, 2023 at 7:00 PM.
Excellent, thank you, Steve. And do we have a second?
This is Tim, off second.
All right, thank you very much, Tim. All those in favor, Ray?
Aye.
And Tim?
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
And myself, Steve Robichaud, votes aye, and the matter is continued. Attorney Kenny, Sue, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. Appreciate it. Good night.
All right, thank you. And next up on LCP update, Kate?
Thank you, Chair Kate Maldonado, Assistant Director of Planning and Development. As of last week, we completed our Phase One community outreach, attending meetings within each of our villages, where we had robust conversations about strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and challenges. So thank you for everyone who's attended the meetings to date. To review any of those comments that were presented at those meetings, please visit our webpage, barnstablelcp.com, and you can click on the Document Library tab, and under there, you'll see notes from each of those minutes to date. Our next meeting will be held this Thursday, January 26th, that'll be in person at Town Council, starting at 5:00 PM. This meeting will offer an update on our goals and strategies, an update on existing conditions, work achieved to date, as well as our housing production plan, which is running parallel to this effort. Additionally, as a next step, we will talk about our Bringing It Together meeting. That meeting will pull together our Phase One. We're looking at end of February, early March for that meeting, and at that time, there will be a summary of all of our existing conditions that our consultants have been actively working on, that data, and there'll also be a review of all of the public comment from all the meetings that we've attended, patterns that we're seeing with the comment as we work to develop our vision. So those are the two big aspects of this Phase One, visioning and existing conditions, and that meeting will be talked in further detail at the meeting this coming Thursday. So that's it on the local comprehensive plan, but I would be remiss if I didn't mention also this Wednesday, we have our Great Streets. It's our second meeting for our downtown Hyannis Great Streets meeting that also will be held in person, but that will be at the Barnstable High School within the main cafeteria. We're asking all attendees to park close to the gymnasium as that's the best access to get right to the cafeteria. There will be a presentation between 8:00, 7:00, sorry, 7:00 to 8:00 PM, and proceeding will be an open house between 8:00 to 9:00 PM, where members of the public can ask any questions, relay any comments that they have. The big reveal and discussion at this meeting will be early design concepts for our main street as well as our surrounding streets and intersections. So big meetings this week being the Great Streets on Wednesday, and then Thursday, the local comprehensive planning meeting as well. Both meetings will be recorded, so there's certainly opportunity, if you can't make it out in person, to watch the videos, and you can always present questions and comments to staff. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much, Kate, and great work. Kate, you and your team have been doing a great job, especially with the outreach. I feel like I'm always seeing information on Facebook and the website, and even got this in the mail today, so really, really great job.
Thank you.
Let's see, approval of minutes, looking for a motion to approve the December 12th, 2022 draft minutes.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second that.
Thank you both, and all those in favor, Ray?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
And myself, Steve Robichaud, votes aye. Correspondence, Chapter 91 Notice 53 North Bay Road, Barnstable, Pier, Ramp, and Flow. Chapter 91 Notice 94 Long Beach Road, Centerville, Pier, Ramp, and Flow. Future meetings, February 13th and February 27th, 2023, at 7:00 PM. Any comments, discussion prior to a motion to adjourn? Okay, look for a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Steve, and a second.
I'll second.
Thank you, Ray. All those in favor, Ray?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
And myself, Steve Robichaud, votes aye. Meeting is adjourned.